This is the Wapaka area school district board of education meeting.
One, two, three. Call the meeting to order. Ben, why don't you help us with this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. Everyone is present. Approval of the agenda, there's no changes. Is there a motion to approve? All in favor? There are a lot of people from the outside world. Is there anybody that wants to talk to us?
Later on.
Hearing none. You notice that this, once again, we got all the way through 12 months without somebody talking to us.
I think so. Yeah. I don't know if that's good or bad.
Knock on wood. Approval of the minutes.
So moved for approval.
And that would be for the November 10 and November 16 meetings.
Was that Connie?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Communications, Dave.
All right, we're up to donations. Wapaka Foundry donated metal plates, stock and sheets to the high school CTE, Career and Technical Ed program. Culvers and Brady Shulis, $236.04 to the Wapaka FFA, Wapaka Alliance Club, $750 to the high school special ed program. And then Justin J. Watt, J.J. Watt Foundation donated 80 football uniforms and pads to Wapaka Middle School to value that $12,991.80.
How did they find out about that?
Yeah. The story. Rocky Mandello was asking for uniforms for basketball and football. That's a lot you can buy one right now. And he said, can I seek out J.J. Watt Foundation because he had heard other middle schools getting, you know, around that kind of dollar amount for stuff. And I said, sure. And he filled up the form, there were some questions he had to answer, and within three weeks, we got a check in the mail.
That quick.
So, yeah, very, very handy and got some great uniforms picked out.
That's pretty neat.
We approve the donations with our gratitude and also our thanks to Rocky for reaching out on that.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you notes.
There is a thank you note in your packet to the founder, to a number of people from the foundry who came to present foundry in a box to high school students. And it basically is a model foundry that they can, portable, carry around with them and demonstrate the workings of the foundry to students and other groups. And a thank you note from Brenda Rowan family for a donation made to the high school scholarship foundation. Recognition, there was a program in your packet from the parents' night for the middle school forensics team appreciation night. And on that program, there was a list of their results of their tournaments over the year, and they did very well this year. Just wanted to pass that on.
School board, reports on meetings attended?
None that I'm aware of at this time.
Upcoming meetings and other activities, Dave?
Friday, December 28th is the last day for incoming office holders to file a notice of non-candidacy. That question was asked last time. Tuesday, January 5th is the last day to file candidacy papers. A regular board meeting is on Tuesday, January 12th. And then Wednesday, January 20th through Friday, the 22nd is a WSB convention. And I did want to just talk to you about it. Anyone who is intending to go to that convention, I know that, as I suggest in my notes, Pat is going to go. Pat is our delegate, as determined by the president early on, so as long as he's going, you will serve as the delegate then.
Okay.
And Betty, you were the second or the alternate in case you were going.
Were you not yet?
Maybe we should all go.
I'm gonna, excuse me, Dave. I think I'll be going down for Wednesday afternoon or whatnot because the delegate is out, assembly is on Thursday, so I'll be there for all day Thursday and all day Friday. And Dave, just so you know, my computer doesn't have this, nor does Betty's. So, but if you keep it up here and just kind of keep current, we'll be fine.
Okay.
It's only loaded for Novembers.
Well, you just need to go back to the, go back to the board documents.
And I'm Steve.
So, it's okay, as long as we will stay, we'll stay current.
Okay.
As long as you got it up here.
Okay, and I will. If there's anything, I do have it connected here.
We'll just holler.
Linked to the document, so if there's anything, just let me know.
Dave, are we going to the convention? I know we had mentioned it. Are we, any other?
Well, that was my question, if anyone's interested in going. So far, Pat is, and I haven't heard of anyone else at this point. But December 11th is the end of the early bird registration, but we can do it after that too.
And you have to commit to three nights in the good motel?
You do.
Two nights or?
Yes.
And Dave, has anybody filed candidacy papers?
I am not aware of anyone even asking for them, but I didn't ask that particular question. December 1st is the first time they could ask for them. But I will, if you want to know, I will send out when someone requests them. So if anyone's interested in going, please let me know. We can get you registered. Pat, we're going to come up to the resolutions in a, at the end of this section, and then we'll talk about the resolutions and what we might, what position you might take if there's anything of particular interest.
I look through them, so I'm.
Okay, good. Then committee meetings with the personnel committee, Sandy.
Okay, well, we didn't, did we have a meeting? No, we didn't. But there's been some activity. At your places tonight is a copy of the notice of vacancy, the position posting that was posted online. I hope any of you went to that. I actually wrote this through so that I could fly. I mean, I wanted to see what it looked like, and it looked like this. They assisted Don Stevens or was consulted on this before it was posted. And also is a candidate's questionnaire. In the posting, there's a reference to a candidate's questionnaire. And our consultant asked candidates who were interested in positions, contact him to get this as soon as possible. And it's a pretty substantive request for response. Again, they assisted Don with making sure questions would be covered related to policy governance, for example, and other things. So this has been posted at this point. We give you a review, a status report review, that also is at your desks. The applications are due December 28th. And as of Monday, December 7th, nine potential candidates have requested information. But Don does point out that typically approximately half of candidates apply during the last two weeks. We'll stay. So we'll see if that's true during the holiday season. And then there's a calendar of events that doesn't really have, except for the application deadline at this point, dates specified, but it includes the board working to establish criteria for evaluating applications. And I'll be working with Don Stevens to develop a form that will collect information from you that would be, serve as the basis for an evaluation form that we can use, that the personnel committee would finalize. And then, once the application deadline passes, the applications are going to be delivered to the district and sorted into an A-list, the B-list and the other list as evaluated by our consultant, Don Stevens, based on our board criteria. And then the personnel committee and any other interested board members will review the applications individually in the district administration offices and complete a candidate evaluation form for each, and then we'll send the evaluation forms to Don Stevens. And then the personnel committee will meet with our consultant to select candidates to interview. And then we have some decisions to make, including the number of candidates to interview, whether or not we'd like to hire Don Stevens for additional services to us, an interview schedule and questions, and the level of community and staff involvement, and probably other things that we'll come up with during the discussion. That's the end of my report at this point.
Sandy, those other things, the number of candidates, consideration of interviews and so on, when do you think that timeframe wise, we will be talking about those things? Does that be in January sometime?
I think in January sometime, given that it's almost the end of, well, blink of an eye, but yes, yes. I'm going to be talking with Don Stevens later this week to just sort of review this with him to get his sense of what's doable. Certainly we'd like to proceed as quickly as we possibly can.
I would think you would determine the number of candidates to interview after you have reviewed the applications, right? So you've got to wait until that point to make that determination. And then the interview schedule and questions would come after that as well. Originally, we had planned on January 4th through the 6th, 8th, I think, Monday through Friday, for board members to come in and review the applications. I think that's not going to work. We're going to have to delay that because of the work we have to get done prior to that. Betty is going to be unavailable that week anyway.
The first week of January.
Right.
And of course, I'll be in Milwaukee for the third week for some of it.
During the, right.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Well, certainly, that and then there's still.
Yeah.
I think the point is that earlier we can get this on people's calendars, the better off we're going to be, so. Okay, thank you, Sandy. Steve Johnson.
Yes, Steve Johnson.
At your places, you will find something from the Wisconsin Public Funds Professionals, regarding from Carol Word, basically an update on where we are. As you will recall, we can approve moving forward with the refinancing of the 2006 This is basically telling you, based on the projections that you originally saw, that there's been an adjustment of approximately 10 basis points due to, in part, the anticipation of the feds bumping rates by about a quarter point. And equally important is the number of issues that have been out there this month. They're projecting a lower number next month, which could bring the price down slightly. So again, this is still a projection. Originally, they had suggested that we might be seeing, I forget the total amount, is approximately $9,000 difference. The projection now is $9,000 less than it was in the total savings or net savings to the district. Nonetheless, it is still to our benefit to consider going forward at this time because there will still be some rather significant savings. I assume, and Carol, you can correct me if I'm wrong, as we get closer to the final date, we will be getting another update as to where they presume they will be able to issue these.
Steve, will they be coming back to the board at some point before anything actually transpires?
I don't know that we would need them to, no.
So just be informational.
If we add, if we wanted them to, if we had some questions, I'm sure there would be more.
No, I didn't know if they had kind of scheduled themselves or nothing.
School visits?
They weren't scheduled for this month?
Right. But you put it in here.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. I, I'm going to take this time for two things. First of all, I was over at the high school yesterday, and I did do some visiting, and I'm not going to belabor the point because we have some people who want to spend more time sharing experiences with us, and so we'll get them. But I did want to pass along one conversation that I had that I found interesting for the board especially. I visited with the student teacher who's working with Amy Mead. Her name is Megan, and I can't remember her last name, so maybe you can help me. But in any case, she was a very delightful young woman. She graduated from Wauga High School and is finishing up her college here at the, at Wapaka, and will be done in a couple of weeks. She's in English. But what I found very interesting, she told me that in her class of student teachers, they're from the university at Point, they're only 12. It's the lowest class they've ever had in terms of English teachers or teacher wannabes. And she said that those behind them, students coming up, are just as small, if not smaller. I only bring that out because I read an article recently, and I'm sure some of you have seen, that the number of people moving into teaching as a profession is slowing down, and there are some places, some districts, that are having trouble filling positions. And of course, English is one that you would expect to find lots of positions or people in because everybody, every school needs to have it. So I found that interesting. We talked about that a little bit, and she gave me some reasons why she thought maybe that that was the case, some of her people, she was, other students and some of their ideas on that. But it just sort of signals maybe that we have to keep our eyes and ears open a little bit to the fact that in the future, finding positions even in mainstream English may not be quite as easy as we have had in the past. Interesting, for whatever that's worth, I found that. The second thing, and I mentioned today, I'm taking the time, this is a little off topic, but it does have to do with one of our programs, and that is, I just received the Wapaka Community Garden, which you know I'm involved with. I received our records. Every year, we tabulate everything that we give away, how much and where it goes. And I thought I would just spend one minute reporting on that because it does affect a lot of people in this room. First of all, our total of volume this year was 106 tons, 11,850 pounds. And I think a lot of people think that we give most of our produce to the food pantry, which is a good customer of ours. But I thought I'd just give you an idea of where everything goes because it's a little bit more extensive than most people realize, even more than I do sometimes, even though I'm there on a regular basis. Faith Community Church received 542 pounds. The Firehouse Apartments on North Main Street received 65 pounds, and they're mostly senior apartments. Foundations for Living, 40 pounds. Iola Senior Center, 860 pounds. Manoa High School, 172 pounds. Ashka Senior Living, 136 pounds. OV Center, which is out at King, the Veterans Assistance Program, 867 pounds. Ruby's Pantry, which I think you know is next to our bus garage, pretty close anyway, 1,309 pounds. Stevens Point Farm Shed, 113 pounds. UW Stevens Point Dietary Cafe, 168 pounds. Wapaka Bread Basket, 1,200 pounds. Wapaka Food Pantry, and this is one of our good customers, obviously, 1,515 pounds. The high school received 936 pounds of produce. The Senior Center in Wapaka, 960 pounds. Wapaka Soccer Association, 125 pounds. Wauga Presbyterian, 353. Wauga Food Pantry, 722 pounds. And our WIC program through the county, which is primarily in Clintonville, Wauga and Wapaka, 707 pounds. And Winchester Academy, 143 pounds. So it's a little bit more extensive than most people think when they think of the Wapaka Community Garden. It's like we give to the food pantry, some to the high school, and that's really our two customers. But the reality is, we have about 20 customers that we give, and it's been growing every year. Some of these, there's about four or five new ones here, and I suspect next year we might have as well. So I just thought I would throw that out there because sometimes people wonder where all that goes. And that's where it goes. And there's a breakdown of everything here, if anybody ever wants to look at. We weigh and write down our results every day for every distribution because it's important. So that's my report.
Thank you.
I just have a question, Pat. Do people request a donation that you can't meet for some reason, or do you?
We haven't had that that I'm aware of.
I just wondered if people said, boy, I can really use more tomatoes.
Sometimes people, no, we're pretty good about that. Sometimes people request things that we don't grow.
No.
Or don't have, or it's not in season. We had a request, for instance, and just using example, Bethany. Bethany had a big dinner that they were sponsoring, and the end of the year was in September, I believe. And they wondered if they could have things for salad making and vegetables. I said, well, by September, if we don't have those things available then, unfortunately, we had all, you know, squashes and late season things. And they were looking for some other things, so we had to kind of turn them down. But other than that, we're pretty good about trying to make it work.
So are the churches and some of those other organizations, are they asking for a specific thing, like the Bethany thing, or do they just want?
No, they generally like would use Faith Community, for instance, they're, they call, and actually, I think it's, is it Lobsters and Fishes? Is that senior? No, that's Faith Community. They have people who come in on a regular basis, and I want to say like every Tuesday and Thursday at noon time. So we take produce over, and then those people who come in through their church can have whatever is there. And they distribute it from that point. So we make available whatever we have and can give to them. And then the next week, when we go back, they'll tell us if they had extra or if they could use more. And it's a little bit hit and miss, but we get a pretty good idea after a while.
How many of the classes in high school and middle school actually volunteer?
Well, Jem's group at the high school, the, not only the FCA and some of the horticulture and some of the other, they're routinely in the spring and in the fall. You know, and it depends, every year it's a little different on which classes come out. But we have a goodly number of students. And then Bob Welch brings the entire seventh grade, I think it is, seventh grade over, the whole class game anyway, two, five buses low in the spring. So, and then we get summer school. Patty Hunter brings her group, and a couple others have come over. So we probably have anywhere between 300 and 500 students a year. So, thanks for the time.
Good. Great thing you're doing.
Yeah. It's, you know, and I need to do, I need to say this because I think it's, we have a great staff and a lot of wonderful volunteers, and it's important to let that be known to the general public that, you know, there are a lot of people involved. And I'm just kind of the point person right now, but yeah, it's a great program.
Good. Thank you for all you do. Administrator.
Let's do the WSB resolutions.
Oh.
Pat, did you, you said you looked through them. Did you see anything you want to point out? And there are a couple pages of them.
Yeah, if you did look through the resolutions, and maybe some of the people here can give the, the one maybe on charter, our voucher schools is going to be very contentious. I think we all know that, and I can't remember exactly how it's worded in here, but you all know the arguments in terms of voucher programs versus public school programs and whether they should be given or not. If you look through some of that data, it was pretty interesting to see that 75, I think it said 75% of the students who received voucher money this year had already attended a private school, and that the number of new students is relatively small. So it's sort of like people who are already going to private school are saying, hey, we can get some money now to do it, and that's what's happening. I don't know what to think about that exactly, other than I don't know if that was really the intent originally, but that's what's happening. So.
Well, everybody knows the original intent was to not do that.
And I know, I know.
In fact, that's how it got the foot in the door, is we won't do that.
But that's where it's moving toward.
Where it is, yes.
Where it is. So I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion.
And these are all fluid too. The resolutions change as the discussion takes place.
I didn't see too many others that I thought were very controversial, quite honestly, but.
Not, not many that would affect us, sir.
No, not many would affect us.
I was surprised with the one that they were talking about along districts to set aside funds and trust or long-term fixed assets. I'm not sure that there are that many schools that are in a position to be able to specifically set funds aside for that.
Right.
It's more of an on-the-fly thing, I think, with most schools' budgets.
Yeah. It'd be interesting, the assembly.
If we're in a position, at some point that we are looking at a long term, and they included school buses as an example, is one thing that you could use for it. It might, if we're in a position to do so, it might give us some advantages in the long run.
It'll be interesting to see at the assembly who introduced some of those, I mean, what school districts, because usually the people who introduce them will follow up on the discussions.
The whole issue there is whether that money can then be used as, from the general fund for state aid purposes. Because you can put money into fund balance and then spend it later on, but the mechanism that would allow you to use those funds to get state aid on those costs is what's at Wapaka County Charter School Agreement. As you know, we've had that charter school in place for 20 years probably. It's evolved. It has gone through some rough spots because of lack of ability to fund or lack of students to be eligible for special. But I think we turned a corner a couple of years ago when we were able to get day treatment services as part of that charter school. So now we have students who are there for day treatment only. We have students who are there for day treatment and education, and students are there just for education. The day treatment portion pays what used to be the county's portion of costs for that program and helps us turn the corner on funding and keeping the school districts' costs reasonable. I don't have the contract. CISA did not get it out yet, but I expect to have it by the end of the week. There are no major changes in that. It's a good program. I'm suggesting that we continue with that. If you want to see the actual contract, we can wait till January, but I put on the agenda expecting to have that contract in hand by the time of this meeting, so it's your choice.
Are you looking for a motion?
If it's, if you're comfortable approving it based on this year's, I would be looking for a motion, yes.
Okay, then I would move that we approve the Wapaka County Charter School agreement with the understanding that we don't anticipate major changes.
Perfect. Yes.
Is your second?
Second.
Do you need a?
Just voice one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Dave, is that always a one-year agreement?
It's a one-year agreement, but it, it's approved every year, but it, I don't know how to put, it's approved for the following year. Because if we were to pull out now, it'd be too late to make adjustments for next year. So this is actually, we're already approved for next year, this is for the following year, because you need to, you need to indicate you're getting out in time for other schools to adjust their funding levels. So it is a one, answer your question, yes, but it's the following. Brings us to the board monitoring, and one of the suggested activities for monitoring this year was how do schools deal with sensitive issues in the classroom? And we, I think based on the suggestion, administrators identified a number of sensitive issues that would fall under this category, and they thought we would identify a couple from different grade levels and bring the teachers in to talk about how things are addressed. They have particular examples that they're going to talk about from their grade levels. So I think we'll start out with, Mr. Erst Palmer, would you introduce here?
Sure. Joining us this evening is school counselor, Mrs. Susan Billski. Susan works at both the chain and the Wapaka Learning Center. School counselor, Mr. Ryan Bonneman. Ryan works at the Learning Center and the middle school. And in special education, representing us today from the Learning Center, is Mrs. Renee Harms.
And the topic?
Well, I'll let them.
Or let them, okay.
Bring up the top.
Perfect. Can they either pull up chair right in the middle there or stand? But if they want to sit around the table there and present from the middle, that'd be.
We'll start with Ryan.
All right, well, some of the topics that we talk about in our classroom.
All right, well, some of the topics that we talk about in our classroom guidance lessons, you know, certainly there's a lot of variety in that. But we do touch upon some sensitive topics from time to time. It's something that we focus on every single school year, something called Good Touch, Bad Touch, which addresses sexual abuse prevention. And so all of our students in K through five receive the information, the education regarding this type of personal safety issue. And really, we focus on three main concepts when we do teach that. One being that students have the right to say no if they ever receive an uncomfortable type of touch. They have the right to tell any type of secrets that make them feel scared or worried or uncomfortable. And that students have the ability to talk with specifically adults in their support system whom they trust to talk to. Prior to our lesson, we do send out a letter to parents notifying them of this sensitive topic. And we encourage parents to talk to their children about this type of safety issue and kind of go over some situations and strategies certainly before our lesson. And hopefully the students that are taking that information back to their parents to talk with them about what they learned in our lesson. And that's one of the sensitive topics that we discuss every single school year in our guidance lessons.
What grade does that happen?
K through five.
And Ryan, when do you typically meet with them? Early in the school year, as you can?
We usually do it, I know right now, I'm doing it right now in my classes.
I complete my.
We'd like to get it in before the holidays come up, you know, just because it's important. And, you know, for the students to get that information as early as possible in our curriculum.
Do students respond to the discussion?
Very well.
Yeah.
They're very, you know, students are very good and just they listen, they, they're open to listening to these topics. There's, especially at the younger levels, there's, you know, and we have had students who might have had a sensitive experience like that. Where then they know that they can talk to either Ryan or I, and they have in the past, we have had that before.
Yeah, that was going to be one of my questions, too, if you found people came to you after, yes.
Do, the letter that you send home to parents, is that, is before you do? And can the parents opt out of it if they want?
We don't offer that in the letter, but certainly if they do ask to, they get plenty of warning and they can call the school and they ask to opt out.
You said either that you hope that they, after they've had the session, that they go back to their parents to talk about it, or you perhaps encourage it, one or the other. Have you gotten feedback from the parents after the session?
I don't think I have, yeah. It'd be nice to know, you know, this is certainly what, what parents are thinking about our curriculum. And I hope that they feel it's effective and helpful for their kids to be safe.
Also said something to the effect of that they should go to adults and their support structure. Remembering, or attempting to remember, when I was in second grade, I wouldn't know what support structure meant. How do you convey that to them as to who they should potentially seek out?
At the end of the lesson, I always ask that a child to think about if they have any kind of problem at all. That's how I usually phrase it. To, you know, think of one grown-up in your life that you trust. That's how I word it. And then I ask them to raise their hand. And just to raise their hand and saying, you know, I do have that one person. And I look to see if everyone's hand is raised. And then I have them put their hands down, and then if they do not raise their hand, I just say, just so you all know, if you don't feel you have an adult that you trust, that you can talk to, that's when we go over who in the school they can talk to. We start with the teacher, we, of course, who are available, and just we remind them that we're here to.
And then in the older grades?
Yeah, and specifically with the grades, I mainly work with three, four, and five. We do watch a video, it's called Time to Tell. And in the video, they specifically address what a support system is and give examples of who those adults could be, you know, varying from, you know, a teacher to a nurse to a police officer to a grandparent. And all those individuals are people that, you know, the students can talk to and trust if they need to talk about a sensitive topic.
So if a student does come and report something to you, what do you do? What's your obligation?
We contact Child Protective Services, and they take it from there.
We're mandatory reporter. We have, there's no choice on that.
Do you typically have the teachers in the classroom, the classroom teachers, at the same time you're talking with the students?
Teachers are to be in the classroom during our lessons, no matter what.
You mentioned kindergarten. Do you go into 4K at all?
No.
No?
Any thoughts about kindergarten?
I don't have thoughts about it myself at this time.
Light on it, I work at one of the parishes here, the parish of Wapaka. And we too have to present safety for young children. And we started each year, and they, again, it's the same touch, you know, I stop and go, and whatever. They're really receptive to it. And I asked that question about parents opting out because we have to send a phone home, asking the parent if they want to opt out. And our feedback, we've gotten feedbacks, and they're grateful for that. Because I think it's hard for parents to talk about it sometimes with their children. But by starting the conversation, like you said, and sending materials home so that they can continue the conversation, they're grateful for that. But we have to do it with threes and up, and they're pretty old to it. They know what we're talking about, you know. Maybe something we could start in 4K.
If there aren't any other questions, we have a couple more sensitive issues to share with you.
Okay.
And so the other, then, Ryan?
Yeah, I mean, we also, Susan and I also provide opportunities to students with any type of changing family situations in terms of a parent separation or divorce, whether or not a parent may be incarcerated or in jail at the time, any types of birth or death in the family. And really, providing students an opportunity to talk with us as counselors, either one-on-one or sometimes even in a group, small group situation, so that students, you know, understand that they're not alone, that they have other students who may be feeling the impact of that family change. And that, you know, sometimes that type of change does impact, you know, academic achievement and feelings of, you know, belongingness in a school environment. And having students the opportunity to share their experiences. And what we do then is to provide positive coping skills that kids could use in the school and out of the schools if they are successful despite, you know, any type of family change that might be sometimes sensitive for them to talk about.
How would you alert it, so you know which students to contact?
That's a very good question. Sometimes parents contact us. We have a referral process in which parents will contact a teacher, then the teacher will refer to us. There are students that we know from year to year, and they have previously been in a room or talked with us individually. And they would like, you know, they continue with that support from year to year as well. And so, yes, it's referral-based and also just the prior knowledge of the students that we've worked with in the past.
Do you do anything along the lines that you talked about just previously where you work with a whole classroom? Do you ever approach the same top of concerns here with a larger group? Or you can't, maybe that's not, I'm just curious as to.
We have had a lesson a number of years back, just talking about family in general. And who is your family? And we had the students do a project where they brought in a family picture. And they got to go up in front of the class and just talk about who their family was. And it was a, just, it was a lesson to just help gain tolerance of different families. Not every family looks exactly the same. And so we had done that kind of thing. And then when that lesson happened, it touched upon various family changes that some students went through. But it was done in such a way that they felt proud of their family, no matter what the situation was.
Sure.
So we've had lessons like that.
That question might lead into your next topic, I think, if you're still, are you talking about autism?
We just have one more sensitive issue.
Okay.
That we work with at the counseling department, and that is suicidal ideation. Students who make statements threatening harm to themselves are taken very seriously by the counseling department. And referrals to counsel students who threaten harm can be made to anyone, about anyone who has a concern for that student or has heard the student make those statements. Counselors, we have received referrals from concerned parents and school staff at times, or even students. And with, when we get notified that there is a threat to a threat of harm, the counselor then meets with the student and we assess the level of suicidality and whether that be low, medium, or high. And counselors then, we consult with one another after we have conducted that assessment. Then we contact the parent or guardian of that student. And if needed, we contact Child Protective Services or the police, and we contact them for further direction. And a plan we develop with the student, we develop a safety plan with them that, we develop that plan before the end of that school day. We then follow up, we do a follow-up meeting with that student the following day. So I just wanted to mention, too, that's another sensitive issue, and that is how we handle it.
Interested to know how parents respond to a student who might be referred either for changing family issues or suicidal ideation.
Okay, so the changing family.
Yeah.
We always ask the student if they'd like to be in a group, if that's something that fits for them. We always send a letter home to the parent. And if a parent does not want that, they can opt out.
That happens occasionally?
It happens occasionally. Most of the time, the parents are very wanting that for their student. Because they find that it does help them to be more focused in the classroom.
Can you explain a little bit what happens if you do bring in Child Protective Services? We hear that term used, you know, that people treat for, what actually happens at that point? You call them or they dare nor, by then what happens?
Then they take it from there. They will then come to the school, they call the student, and they take it from there.
So your role is pretty well now just as an accessory, if you will, to?
That's correct. They, we, we take direction from them once that report has been made.
Okay.
Then the next area is autism and understanding the social differences that might be observed within that school environment. And basically, we do a lot of different programs, but the one that's the most important and successful is the peer in services. So at the onset of the school year, I send out a note, request, saying, you know, that your child may be misunderstood by others and that I think education is the key to increasing understanding. And then inside the note, it just lists, I do give permission for Mrs. Harms to talk about this topic. I do not give permission. I want the term autism used, I don't want the term autism used. I want my child to stay in the classroom, I want my child to be out of the classroom during this presentation. And then I make specific individual program presentations for each child. And so it will go through what is autism, similarities and differences between, you know, general education and students with autism. We also discuss specific things that might be observable that are differences. And then give them ideas on how can you be a better friend for this child with autism? So it's working on that tolerance issue, and that's been well received. And so I do this every year, and so some children have had this maybe three years in a row. And they're asking me questions about the neurology of autism, and they're getting in-depth because their knowledge has grown and developed. And so I see really great things out of that. In addition, I also do peer friendship groups. And so basically, general ed students and I, you know, have the teachers recommend, I have students with disabilities select their own peers that way they would like to have in the group. And then I send permission slips home for videotaping that session so that the children with autism can learn from the peer models and learn from their own interactions. And then I also get permission for them to participate in the friendship group. And anytime the children can, or parents can choose to discontinue participation as well. And so that's, those are two big programs that work on that sensitivity for understanding autism, and they're both very successful.
I have two questions about, first of all, what age group are you first approaching this group?
I do preschoolers, so the 3K program, the three-year early childhood program, they get a sensitivity-type training. And I used to work at the middle school, so I, we would do, and I know the high school individuals, special education staff also do peer in services there. So, you know, at the middle school, I would do the entire house because the students would go from one classroom to the other. So I would just have, you know, both, or all three classes all together and do that instruction all at one time. And then, so, you know, the whole gamut of the, and every year, I think it's important because the students in the classroom change, the dynamics change, their knowledge increases, and the questions change as the children age. So every year it's offered.
My second question, and this is more subjective, maybe your opinion, is, is there as much stigma attached to the concept of autism today as there was, say, five, even five years ago? Or is it becoming a little bit more mainstream?
I think that people's understanding of autism has really grown. And with that, less fear, less questions, a greater understanding and more tolerance. With, I honestly have to say that students are the easiest ones to help build that tolerance in, and the adults take a little more instruction and work. And so students have really just been embracing all of the students with disability and their tolerance is, this is my friend. You know, friendship groups, I do a circle of friends, and basically what that is, is finding peers that are sort of leaders that can kind of take a child under their wing until they develop the skills to have the self-advocacy, to be able to kind of communicate with others. And really what's happening is, is it starts out as, you know, a big brother kind of thing, and then it develops as a mutual relationship. So it's been phenomenal to see that transformation, and it's been amazing. So I guess I'd say, you know, less of a stigma, still some leaps and bounds we need to make with community and everyone to understand really what is the spectrum of autism. We may have one perception of what autism is, and that can be very different from child to child. So.
Sure.
It's come a long way, though.
So you mentioned that children can be more tolerant than adults are more quickly tolerant. Do you work with adults also?
I do, yeah, I do staff in servicing, this last Monday I just did another in-service. We have coaching days that the district has provided for us where staff can, and this is all special education staffs and not just autism, but we can go and coach individuals, teachers, peer educators, and really support their knowledge and development in that disability area and how to work with the children. So, you know, administrators have been really supportive to help that training and that instruction. So that education is really the key to building tolerance.
You know, there are articles you read that say that in the general population, the percentage of people who may be autistic is whatever that number might be, one half or one percent. Yeah, what, what, what do you, what would you say to that in terms of our student clientele?
It's very reflective, the percentage is nationally is reflective of what we're observing in educational autism.
And what is that number or numbers?
It's one in sixty-five is kind of the national. And so we are seeing one in every two classrooms, basically, on average in our district. That's pretty, pretty across the board.
And does that change or fluctuate much from, say, K four or 4K to seniors in high school? I mean, does that number seem to fluctuate much?
Honestly, in this, I've only been here five years, so I haven't seen, been able to see that progression. I think that this district is really strengthening our early intervention programming. And so I have seen in previous districts that educational autism has, you know, some of the symptoms have become to the point where there's not instruction that's needed. And as much in the high school area or middle school area or monitoring because they've really gotten some of the educational, or the education to become more independent and learning how to be social and how to compensate for weaknesses and deficits. And so I've seen a change in that, but at this point, it seems like it has been, that prevalence rate is throughout the district. At this point is what I'm seeing, but I have a little back here, five years, so.
It's interesting, that's an emerging number, one in sixty-five this year where last year's one in eighty-eight. The year before that, so you would think that our lower level is going to have one in sixty-five, but the high school is still going to be one in two-hundred as they were when made at that time.
Yeah, and this is different, they're talking about medical diagnosis where we're talking about educational impairment of autism. So the two are very different areas. And so we look at, is there a social implication and is it impacting educationally? So it's kind of comparing apples and oranges in a way as well. But it's, 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 there's a lot of prevalence and it's impacting our education and our, our school environment and our classrooms. Teachers are really required to learn a whole new way of teaching because that learning style that they require is, is a lot different than some of the previous learning styles that we've worked with and some of the previous disabilities that we've worked with. They have a lot of skills that they don't even know that they're already using. And so it's just helping them see what they're actually naturally figuring out to do.
In terms of tolerance, I'm finding that worse students or more young children are being identified. You've got that older generation of grandparents who all of a sudden are saying, oh yeah, now I get it because I know someone who definitely had that diagnosed. And those people in the past would have not understood it at all, but now their grandchildren are neighbors or nephews, nieces, nephews. It's starting to become much more, more tolerance is becoming more obvious.
Pretty much now everyone knows someone or can identify with someone they know who has experienced autism.
I have two questions to make. Do you, I would imagine then that you have to work with parents too? Because, you know, parents need to be educated too about strategies that they can use. So do you work closely with parents?
I do, I, this is an area personally that I want to develop a little bit more. I would like to have more peer parent group time where after school they come and, you know, I discuss a topic or the team members discuss a topic and really help increase education. Right now, I'm doing it more of a one-on-one and as-needed kind of basis. But that's definitely a professional goal I have is to really help strengthen our communication. You know, we communicate on that child specifically, but that general, what is autism and how does that, you know, impact your child specifically, that's the area that we can continue to develop our, our programming for those parents. But I do meet with some parents weekly, I meet, you know, at IP as we discussed and update parents as well. So in progress information, so we're getting some information.
That's awesome. And the second thing is because the chances are that every teacher would have an autistic child in their classroom. Is the education, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, but is the education that our young people are receiving in colleges now, where perhaps that might have been included in special education classes, is that now general education classes that every teacher would have?
That I'm not sure on, I mean, I literally had a six-week, what is autism in special populations, it was called, in my class. And that was too many years ago to say a number, but. But I think that hearing new graduates from the speech and language department at least, they are getting more instruction in autism, more speakers are going into the schools or into the colleges and speaking on that specific topic and sharing information. So I'm hoping that we're moving in that direction.
So that our younger teachers are coming in qualified as opposed to, it seems huge that now you're having to, you know, teach a lot of our seasoned teachers because they've never had training in it. It's kind of backstory.
And I think experience though is a huge educator. Because a lot of the seasoned teachers are the ones who are kind of taking the leadership role and using skills that they've had through experience and said, I used to do this many years ago. And so now we're having a label to it, now it's called executive functioning, I always have done that. And so it's just really, you know, really a lot of the teachers have the skills, they're just not confident in it. Giving them that support and you, you are doing this, you are doing what's best for this child.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Keep up good work.
We have Brian Pry, seventh grade social studies and English teacher to discuss kind of current news and how it impacts regarding politics and some of the other sensitive topics in the school news.
So, one of the things that we do often enough in classes, look at current events. Talking with some of the other middle school teachers, I went to a couple of the eighth grade teachers, talked with my other teaching partner who teaches social studies also, about some of the ways we discuss it, some of the ways it's presented in the classroom. How do we keep it in a, a manner that it's, it doesn't get out of hand? One of the things we do a lot of is, we will show a CNN student news. It's called, it's an online student database. Every day it's updated. It's telling the news in a way that it's relevant to a middle school student. So they understand what's going on, they can understand the topic. Don't show it every day, but we'll show it sometimes two, three times a week. It's about ten minute, ten minutes long and it sometimes leads into some other discussions. But it's a good way to keep them up to date. We do, I mean, when it comes to the class discussion, the one thing that we do with the political side of it, obviously now with what's going on with all the presidential debates and things like that, obviously you don't have a ton of seventh graders who are running home to watch that at night. But there are some who, you know, they watch the news in the morning or they do have some knowledge of, of what went on. So they'll sometimes bring it up. And within a class, you keep the discussion too, you're going to have some students who are more boisterous, feel like they might know a little bit more, whatever their viewpoints might be at this age. The one thing we do is, we try to keep it, or we try to make it where everybody has a viewpoint. We let everybody that wants, you know, I know in my class, if we're having a class discussion on it, everybody has a right to discuss their side of whatever the issue might be. Do we have in-depth class discussions? Politically, no. I think most of our in-class discussions will come across when we have things like that happened in France, when you have some of those issues that happened here in the US here recently, where they're getting more of that, you know, the school shootings, the, those types of things. As much as we want to pretend they don't happen, I guess, at that, they're smart enough to know. And they do bring it up and they're topics we talk about because it's relevant to them. We don't share viewpoints as teachers, I know I don't. They'll even try to get you to sometimes hint. I always tell them, I know the other teachers that I talked with, we try to tell them, we're not here to give them our input, we're trying to get them to kind of come up with their own. And I think one of the areas we really focus on is to teach them how to think about the topic, but not what to think about it. And I think that's where a lot of our classroom discussions are, are often taken. One other thing that we also do is, we try to tell them that, a lot of them have their viewpoints now. It's, it's parent-generated, you know, they can, they'll hear parents talk about it at school or at home. They might talk with their friends about it at school. But the one thing I tell them is, you know, at some point in time, it's going to be their viewpoint. And they have to learn how to generate what their viewpoint is and think about the other side, those types of things. We try to make it relevant at times to the topic. If we're discussing, in my level, we teach a little bit of ancient history to certain areas of South America and things like that. But I know with eighth grade and their, their topics, they talk, especially now with this whole idea of bringing immigrants in and not allowing it, but yet when they're discussing the colonies, that's exactly what it's, what we did many, many years ago. So try to make it relevant to the class also. So sometimes you can throw off buzzwords, you know, propaganda, you know, talking about what propaganda was like, you know, colonial time or even, you know, in different countries to what's propaganda now and explaining it to them a little bit. For the most part, I would say that's how we cover it.
What, I'm sorry, I was just going to add, what do you think from your students, generating your students, is, is the more, more controversial topics right now that come up to your?
Oh, I, most of it is the race issue. I think that that's the, the idea of, you know, they've, they've seen a lot in the last year or two with, you know, the, the racial issues that are going on with, you know, police officers and, you know. That's, that's a big one, you know, we have to try and talk about, you know, try to explain, you know, they want to know why, why riot, you know, those types of things. And try to just explain that sometimes that's how people, you know, want to voice their, their displeasure and how some groups sometimes just do it differently. You know, that's, but I would say the race, the race issue is the hardest one.
The hardest one to explain or there's polarization between the students viewpoints?
I would say both, I mean, it's the hardest one to explain because it's a tough issue to get into, especially at that level. But I think sometimes too, it's tough for them to comprehend, like to understand, you know, well, why is it this one group and not other groups and those types, those types of things.
Other questions?
You mentioned that you have a role of teaching students how to think about something, that what do you think? How do you do that?
Well, especially as, at the seventh grade level, or even, I don't know. One of the things that you'll, sometimes you'll get that one student who is sort of the, the one that speaks their mind the most. Teaching them how to think would be to, if there's nobody on the other side, giving them the idea of, what if you were on the other side? You know, and trying to make them think of, what if someone else thought this way? You know, why do you think that way? And what if somebody else thought this way? And I think that's teaching them to go, they're not just getting the one side of the story then, or they're not getting the one side of the issue that they might, or the side they're on. Thinking about the other side, I think helps them learn to be more relevant and not just be, you know, adhering to the one point. I think it allows them to open up their minds a little bit and, and learn more.
I think that's awesome. I just read an article recently that one of the things that's lacking the most in students is critical thinking. And they're not, they're not being schooled and how to look at an issue critically, look at both sides and form a theory. So that's awesome that you do that.
Do you have good resources available to you that allow, that would provide you with multiple perspectives about single issues?
If, I think if I taught it more as like a current event, you know, a lot of what we do is, you know, it's just that it's current, it's on the fly. We might show something one day on the CNN student news or something might come up where the students will talk about it, where I never even thought about, oh, well, let's go into both sides of the topic. There's plenty out there. I know there's, there's current event websites you can go on to, CNN has one. I use a, a one, on some days where we're doing a little bit more of current event, which is called Twin Tribune. They can go and they, they read articles on certain topics, whatever it might be. But I've never really, you know, because I don't take the topic in general, I've never really sat down and went on both sides, but yeah, there's definitely resources out there if we will.
Critical thinking skills are a main part of our mental policy. You're right, there's also, and you need to focus on those in all areas across the country. Here we have students preface their remarks with, well, my dad says.
At times.
Or my grandmother.
And then you try to, you know, at least channel it back to just the regular class discussion, but, oh yeah, there's, there's no doubt that gets me.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Becker, standing, standing in for?
Standing in for Jeff Dulsky. Jeff is one of our high school guidance counselors. He was prepared to come tonight. He and I had met several times and, and talked and he has detailed notes that he shared with me, but he sounds a lot like Mr. Shamble does, except that he did miss school yesterday. He tried to be here today and I sent him home. I said, quit polluting us, get out of here. So I, I am, you're stuck with me. The issue that I'd like to talk about is suicide. Unfortunately, it's an issue that we have had to deal with at Wapaka High School, but most high schools at some point in time do have to deal with this. Before I start, Mr. Shamble, how much time do I have? I'll, I'll keep this short.
First of all, we do some training with our teachers and it's ongoing and it's periodic. Every once in a while, we talk about, you know, what, what happens if, if we do have a suicide and we need to talk about it with our students. Suicide is such a touchy subject, so sensitive and triggering suicidal thoughts in others. We really only want trained people talking to our students about the issue of suicide. And so we talk to our staff about ACT, not the test. The initials stand for knowledge, so show that you recognize something's going on. Care, show, show care to that student and then tell someone on the crisis team about it. And we tell teachers specifically, send that student to the office with somebody or call the guidance office and have somebody come get them, escort them. But, you know, if we're actually dealing with the real suicide, we get our crisis team together. And the crisis team is guidance counselors, social worker, psychologist, Maureen comes over. Principals are all involved, pretty much any kind of pupil service person that we can find, even our police liaison officer would be involved in that. And we put a plan together, identify, you know, who the student was and really look at who were their close friends. Try and log out who those people are. We try to intercept those friends as they come into school and we pull them aside, bring them into the guidance offices. And one of our guidance counselors will inform the students of what has happened. We found out through, through experience last time, we, we need to collect electronic devices because we started to have some problems with students sending out partial information or wrong information through their electronic devices and we had a little bit of a rumor control to try and take care of. Another thing we do is we look at what are our other supports. Some of our students are very, very involved in their churches and some of our churches are very, very involved with their students where they will come on Wednesdays to eat lunch with their students. We found that they will come to our building at the drop of a hat, that they'll just, if we call and we say we have students that are asking to speak with you, they come in force. And the last time we had a suicide, they indeed did that. They came and set up shop in our community room. They did an excellent job of working with the students that they normally see, who have relationships with them and any other student that wanted to talk to them, they're just good, caring individuals. Then we created a statement that was read to homeroom. We called a special homeroom on the day because our homerooms are a smaller environment. Homerooms have, generally speaking, somewhere around twelve students. Teachers have developed a relationship with those students over time. Our homerooms stay put all the way through the senior year, so our homeroom teacher for the seniors would have had them for four years. And then that teacher reads, reads the very carefully crafted statement to the students so that they know what happened. They also talk about what kind of resources are available for them. That if they're experiencing any kind of concerns at all, that they should reach out to any adult that they're comfortable with, much like the elementary people talked about. And, and that adult will get them to somebody who can really help them to, to process through that issue. We identify who the close friends are and we try and put a group together that supports them long-term. Then we look at those that are just mere acquaintances or even outliers, students who have had a previous experience maybe that hearing about the suicide triggers a visceral reaction in them. So we try to identify all the students that are going to need some help. And then afterwards, provide a myriad of supports for the students. A suicide is not just a one-day issue. A suicide is not just a one-day issue. We found that it's a, it's a year and two-year issue. The last suicide that we had was a couple of years ago. At this point, the close friends of that victim have graduated from high school, have moved on with their lives and, and we really spent a lot of time in that two-year period supporting those students and doing good things for them. So we have a great team, a great group of individuals, but this is one of those sticky, very sensitive issues that we discuss with students where we don't just let anyone talk about it in any kind of format that they want. We did have an experience where one teacher thought that maybe they would do a little therapy in their classroom and we spent several days trying to decompress and get, get the student back in a good state of mind. It's just such a touchy subject, it's probably, in my opinion, it's the most touchy of the subjects that we deal with. So that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you. We have resources in our school, like you said, a team that gets together. Do we ever get called up to other schools that may not have as many resources or do we call in from other schools ever?
You know, when, when we've had this happen, we've had other schools call us or email us and offer their services. But like you said, we do have an excellent team here and we really found that we, with the help of our ministerial support, we really did handle it very well. We had a local psychologist also that offered some services. Students weren't real engaged in that, didn't know that person. You know, even our elementary and middle school counselors came up to help and we really thought that because so many students knew them, they might get more business, but, you know, we didn't, we didn't use them more than the first day, I don't think really. So we do offer also, if a neighboring school experiences this, we will offer our services, but we really haven't been taken up on it.
Do you offer support then for staff also who work with the student during?
Definitely, I, you know, and not so much me, but I, I can speak for our counselors and say, you know, our, our counselors are not just student counselors. They've had several situations where they, they do some pretty serious counseling of, of our staff. They're friends to us, you know, and I think in our times of need, some of the first people we look to are our guidance counselors. You know, our guidance counselors are not ongoing therapists, so we're not, we're not going for weekly sessions with them or anything like that, but, but in time of crisis, they are certainly there for all of our staff also.
Rob, is there anything you can do or think to do in a case, and I'm thinking back a little bit to incidences that have happened, in which you can sort of curb the, the social media at all? I mean, how does that play in? I mean, in the modern world, that is such a big part of what's going on here.
Yeah, and it's a huge struggle for us. Carl will tell you, he spent a lot of time today on a social media issue that we've got going on right now. You know, from the eyes of an administrator, we wish that things like Facebook and Twitter would disappear, you know? That it serves a very, very good function for most adults in our population, reasonable people. But there is that group of people that doesn't seem to be able to manage their use of those social medias and, and we have daily problems with that. Our harassment issues between students, I think, has risen because they, it's so much easier to do with a shot across Facebook or, but yeah, we, we've learned some lessons. You know, we, we recognize that a student in crisis is going to want to reach out to their parents and we want that to happen, but that's all we want them reaching out to. We don't want them using their electronic media to be texting friends, getting that rumor mill going, posting things on Facebook or Twitter.
But it does happen.
It does happen and there's very little way we control it. Think back to when we've had an emergency school closing, parents sometimes know about it before our teachers do because parents are getting an electronic notification, they're, they're texting their kids, their kids are texting them about what's going on at school. It's both good and bad. We know from the school shooting incidents that having kids with cell phones is, is not such a bad thing. They can text out, they can call 911, but you know, there's, there's a good and bad with everything.
Probably the best way we can deal with that is to use the same media to get the truth out. I know middle school has a Facebook page, does high school have a Facebook page?
We do not.
And then yours is used quite regularly for information like that, from what I understand.
Yeah, we share out anything from concerts to sporting events, articles about how to behave yourself online, any number of different things that kind of touch, fancy, we promote things for food service. We've got several teachers who have access to post on there, including food service so that something pertinent comes up, information gets out. We have six hundred and sixty followers, something like that, who get the information and they can share it from there. No better day to gain followers than when school's closed, gain a hundred that day.
Get lots of likes.
A lot of likes and a lot of people follow the page, so. But it's, it's a nice way for us to share as much information about the school district as we can.
Aggregates information, small bites.
Yeah, and then any articles that are in the county posts that pertain to the schools, high school, our school, we try to put those on there too, just to get as much positive news out there as we can.
Who keeps that up?
I, I do it and I've got six or seven other teachers who have access to it.
And they can post an article or something, they might see that we have it on a daily basis.
Any other questions? Mr. Becker. Tough topic, as you said, to deal with and to talk about.
Which we never had to deal with it.
No two are alike either in terms of when they present themselves and how, how they affect people. It's nice that it's, has come before us and we get a feel for what you, all of you are doing and we appreciate all you're doing in this realm. Good. Thanks, everyone. Sandy, did that address your intent for this topic? Consent agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call vote.
Betty Mannion.
Yes.
Patrick Fair.
Aye.
Sandy Robinson.
Yes.
Stephen Johnson.
Yes.
Kirsten Greenfield.
Yes.
Connie Baldwin.
Yes.
Stephen Shambro.
Not sure.
Motion carries, seven, nothing.